Our clerk, Walter Pershewitz, can call the roll.
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
And for the last time.
It's a little bit hard to have to say these three people's names for a final time. Robert Constant.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Yes.
Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
We have a -- Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by our retiring council persons, Margaret Horvath, Joseph Kaczynski, and Tom Berry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, we're going to swear in our newly elected and re-elected elected officials. Judges, can you come forward?
You guys don't get overtime for this, just so you know.
Do each councilperson.
It's wireless.
If we can. Three counsel.
Ladies first, you want to do Denise Maxwell first? No, no, you'll do the mayor first, mayor first. In descending order.
Would you raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dan Pollock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
The Charter and the Ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
And will perform to the best of my ability.
And will perform to the best of my ability.
The duties of mayor.
The duties of mayor.
So help me God. Hi, members, are you? What's this, your fifth time? I, state your name.
John J. Robinson, II.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
And will perform the duties of.
As treasurer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Leaning with the hat.
Yes, I am.
Repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Joe Pershevich.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
The Charter and Ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
And will perform the duties of clerk.
And will perform the duties of clerk.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
So help me God.
Our other district court judge, David Turfee, will do the council person.
Incoming chief.
Incoming chief judge. Denise, do you want to go first? Denise Maxwell. Alonkowski Maxwell.
Raise your right hand, please. I.
Denise Alonkowski Maxwell.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
And the ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council.
And I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God. Raise your right hand, please. I.
I, Bill Bazzie.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of Michigan.
And the ordinances in and for the City of Dearborn Heights.
And the ordinances of the City of Dearborn Heights.
And will faithfully perform the duty of the office of city council.
And faithfully, the office of city council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Raise your right hand, please. I.
I, Tom Wenzel.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the ordinances in and for the City of Dearborn Heights.
And the ordinances in and for the City of Dearborn Heights.
And promise to faithfully perform the duty of the office of city council.
And promise to faithfully fulfill the duty of city council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. I've got a lot of my family here, my mother is sitting right here in the front row. Kind of my 12 grandchildren are here, my son and my daughter, and there's a saying that behind every good man is a great woman, and I've got my great woman here, my wife, Deborah. I've been blessed with two great women. I have a person here that has been detrimental in my campaign. Without her, I wouldn't have been successful, and that's my daughter-in-law, Melissa Wenzel.
I better not mess this up, council chair right here. Raise your right hand, please.
I.
I, Robert Constant.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the ordinances in and for the City of Dearborn Heights.
And the ordinances in and for the City of Dearborn Heights.
And to promise to faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council.
And to promise to faithfully perform the duties of the office of city council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Just on behalf of Judge Wenzel and myself, congratulations to Marge and to --
Joe.
Joe. Congratulations for many, many years of faithful service to the City of Dearborn Heights. Congratulations to all the new elected officials.
And Tom Berry.
Oh, geez.
You're going to see me again. You're not going to live that down. Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd like to first bring up Marge Horvath. You want to walk around here or just stay there?
I'll stay here.
Just personally, on behalf of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, Marge has always been a strong supporter of us and of me personally. Me and Marge talk at least once a week, always check in with her. So she's been very supportive of the police department, not just as a councilwoman, she was our assistant mayor, she's been doing a lot for the city. So we just have a plaque tonight presented to Councilwoman Marge Horvath in recognition and appreciation for your dedicated years of service and support of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, Chief Lee Gavin and members of the Dearborn Heights Police Department. So we would like to present this to you. We couldn't put dates of service because you've been with the city so long, we couldn't figure it out. Thank you for your years of service, and we can continue our story about who we love. Mr. Joe, you can come around the front. Another councilperson. Mr. Joe Kaczynski's been with the city a long time. Again, too, we couldn't put his plaque, the amount of service. I call him Grandpa Joe. We have a good rapport. He's always supported the police department also, and you personally. So again, present to Councilman Joe Kaczynski an appreciation and recognition for your dedicated years of service and support of the police department, Chief Lee Gavin and Last but not least, we say to the youngster for the end. So me and Tommy go back, I call him Tommy, me and Tommy go back a long ways, and again, he has been very supportive of the police department, supportive of me personally. Tom's dedicated to this community, and we're going to miss him on the council. He was always a man of reason. So I'd like to present with him, Councilman Tom Berry, in recognition and appreciation to your dedicated years of service and support of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, Chief Lee Gavin and members of the police department. These three members have a lot of service in the city. They've dedicated their lives to Dearborn Heights, and again, on behalf of the police department and for all our residents in the community, we appreciate everything you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lee. Thank you so much.
Please, go ahead.
Just very briefly, and I won't call everyone up, but also, the fire department is so appreciative of all the work that you guys have done, I mean, all the council, but you three in particular, for the years and years of service, the support for the fire department has been unbelievable by everyone on this council, but you guys have been doing it for so long, we wouldn't be where we're at without your support. We've been through a lot together, I know all of us, and just, words can't express how appreciative we are of the time, but certainly isn't for the salary you guys get for what you do here. It's a full-time job, more than just Tuesday nights, and we just appreciate you so much.
And now, our commissioner, county commissioner, Diane Webb.
Hi, thank you. Thank you so much for the honor of taking the time to do this for three of our very, very dedicated county, city officials that are leaving us. I'm going to go in reverse order, so I'm going to start with the baby. So on behalf of the Wayne County Commission, it is with great honor that we recognize Tom Berry for his distinguished career with the Dearborn Heights City Council. Councilmember Berry's commitment to inclusion has enhanced the quality of life for all of the citizens that call Dearborn Heights home. Over his many years of service, Councilman Berry has provided outstanding leadership and has earned the respect and admiration of the mayor and council, county and state leaders, city employees, and the residents that he served. On this 12th day of December 2017, this certificate is presented to Tom Berry as an expression of admiration and long-lasting record of respect. And on a personal note, I just want to say, you know, Tom, I'm going to miss you so much. Dear friend, dear, dear friend, and just always the voice of reason, and always level-headed, and always thinking of everyone in every decision that you make, and so you will sorely be missed, but I know I'm going to keep in touch with you because I still have you on speed dial. So I'm going to present this to you, if you would let me. I'm so glad. I need it.
Honestly, you're great. Thank you so much.
You're the best.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Now, I don't know how many of you are aware of it, but earlier in the year, we did have a party to honor both councilmembers, Marge Horvath and Joe Kaczynski, for their lengthy, lengthy years of service, and we did full-blown proclamations at that time that we had to use a seven-point font to get everything that they have done over the last several decades for this, for this community. But rather than do that all over again, since they have those already hanging on a wall, I hope somewhere, we did certificates for tonight's event, and if I may, I'm going to take ladies first and go with Marge Horvath. It is with great honor, Marge, that we recognize you for your distinguished career with the Dearborn Heights City Council. Councilmember Horvath's decades of work has enhanced the quality of life for the citizens of Dearborn Heights. Over her many years of service, Councilmember Horvath has provided extraordinary leadership and has earned the respect and admiration of mayors, councilmembers, city employees, and residents throughout the community. On this 12th day of December 2017, this certificate is presented to Marge Horvath as an expression of admiration and a lasting record of respect. On a personal note, I have to say that, you know, Marge takes a lot of calls from constituents, and I don't know if your phone will ever stop ringing, really, and I don't know if mine ever will, because when you call her, she calls me. And so we'll make sure that telegraphs, catch basins are clear, and that.
Beach Daily.
And we'll stay on Beach Daily and Joy Road, and so these are all things that she's been driving home. She was really a champion, really one of the first people to speak up when we took on the Warren Valley thing about the flooding situation. It's just her years of experience of working in many different roles around the city, she can anticipate what the people are going to feel and think about things before they happen, and that has been an enormous benefit to me as a county commissioner when I started here in Dearborn Heights, because she'd say, well, if you're thinking about doing that, then you better talk to these people about this and this and this. So you've been a great teacher for me, and we're going to miss you tremendously. If there's anything I can do for you, thank you. You know, a lot of people have council people, but not too many people have legends, and you guys have legends. I mean, you have people that have dedicated more years than some of the people in this room have been alive. I wasn't looking at you, Senator, but probably. Okay. Councilmember Kaczynski, it is with great honor that we recognize Joseph Kaczynski for his distinguished career of public service in the City of Dearborn Heights. Councilmember Kaczynski's work on the zoning board of appeals, the general government pension committee, and the city council has enhanced the quality of life of the residents of Dearborn Heights. Over his many years of service, Councilmember Kaczynski has provided exceptional leadership and has earned the respect and admiration of mayors, councilmembers, city employees, and the residents throughout the community. On this 12th day of December 2017, this certificate is presented to Joseph Kaczynski as an expression of admiration and a lasting record of respect. On a personal note, Joe is a historian, you know? He's been around and served in many roles as well, and also, you know, when he hears things, and you guys, when you watch city council meetings, you know, you only hear what's being said at the table, but they do so much legwork behind the scenes. You know, this isn't a group that takes the rubber band off the packet when they sit down, and believe me, I worked with some of them all over the years, so I know the difference, but Joe is another one that does his homework. He makes phone calls, he checks everything out, he makes sure that every decision he makes is in your best interest, and he's going to be a tremendous loss to this board. He's been a tremendous asset to this city, so thank you, Joe, for all of you.
Thank you, Joe.
And thank you all for the opportunity to say my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. If anybody wants to take a minute to get pictures, and then you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting.
We have a couple more presentations.
After David Kodejsek, Senator gets up.
The forgotten man. No. Don't sound so excited about him.
Well, I hope you guys have some extra space on your walls. We're going to try and add to the recognition this evening, and I asked the representative if he would be kind enough to let me have the microphone with this being my hometown and all. You know, for the five years that I've been at the state level, my approach when it comes to my municipalities has always been to let local legislators legislate locally and to not always be sniffing around your business, and when you have a question, a comment, or concern, to pick up the phone and reach out and ask. And the relationships I've enjoyed with every member of this council, those who are coming off of it and those who are coming onto it now, I think has been manifested in that way consistently over those last five years. What's different for me, obviously, is the people who are on this council, and even some former councilmembers who are in the audience today, are really directly responsible for me being where I'm at today. And I think back to when I was a junior in high school, and it was the Dearborn Heights Kiwanis who had paid for me to participate in an American Legion program called Boy's State that sort of first ignited that love or that passion for public service, and sitting down with Marge Horvath at the Panera, talking about what it means to be a public servant, and her telling me the good and the bad and the ugly and everywhere in between, and so I tell folks, I said, if you're ever unhappy with the job I'm doing, you can just blame But we're so blessed and we're so lucky here in Dearborn Heights to have folks who truly care about the community, whether we agree or disagree all the time. We're never going to agree all the time, but we have folks that we know are leading from the heart and have the best interests of the community at mind, and we can disagree in a way that I think is respectable, and know that there's no such thing as permanent friends, permanent enemies, it's just permanent issues, and if we allow what's in the best interest of the community to guide our decision-making process, we are going to have a good product for everybody at the end of the day. And so I normally don't read tributes just because of the length of them, but I'm going to break that rule just briefly today to make sure that we can give folks the recognition that they deserve. These tributes are, of course, from myself and Representative Jones, who also represents Dearborn Heights in the state legislature. They're signed by the lieutenant governor and the governor and are part of the 99th legislative record for this year. The first is for Councilman Berry. Let it be known that it's a pleasure to honor Mr. Tom Berry in recognition of his service to the people of Dearborn Heights during his tenure on the city council. With the commitment he has given our community throughout the years, he has exhibited the highest standards of citizenship and unselfishness. As Mr. Berry looks back on his years on council, he can indeed take pride in his service to the people of Michigan and his contributions to their peace of mind and to the protection they sought for their families and their assets. Mr. Berry worked diligently and effectively on behalf of his fellow residents. In the years since he was first elected, the City of Dearborn Heights has grown in reputation as one of Michigan's most desirable and welcoming cities. He has carved out an impressive array of meaningful works and contributed enormously to that progress. Mr. Berry has brought a belief in fiscal responsibility and an awareness of public policy on private lives to all of his work. He has never been swayed by the fads of quick fixes that often seem to emerge from the swirl of crises. Instead, with the down-to-earth approach one would expect from a proud and resourceful man, he has brought genuineness and strength of character to the legislative process. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor Mr. Tom Berry in recognition of his important contributions to life in Dearborn Heights during his tenure on the Dearborn Heights City Council. Sorry, guys. Next, Ms. Horvath. Let it be known that it is a great pleasure to extend this expression of our thanks and best wishes to Margaret Horvath upon the occasion of her retirement from the Dearborn Heights City Council. With the commitment she has given to our state over her career, she has exhibited the highest standards of citizenship and unselfishness. Ms. Horvath was born November 24, 19 -- I'll just stop. In Detroit, Michigan, to a family of Italian immigrants. After graduating from Cooley High School and working for the Chrysler Corporation, she has been blessed with six wonderful children, Andrea, Cynthia, Michael, Patrick, Mark, and Jennifer. In 1967, Ms. Horvath moved to Dearborn Heights and so began her career in public service. For 22 years, she served the North Dearborn Heights School District in every capacity, from a member of the PTA to school board president. Her work was instrumental in the successful merger of the district with Crestwood Schools. In 1993, Ms. Horvath transitioned her talents to the Dearborn Heights City Council. In her professional career at AT&amp;T, Ms. Horvath began a community service group called the AT&amp;T Pioneers. Together, they gave countless books to third graders across Dearborn Heights, Allen Park, and Southgate. Never one to be idle, Ms. Horvath also served with the Dearborn Heights Hockey Association, the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League, The Goodfellows, Meals on Wheels, Kiwanis Club, Spirit Festival, Festival, and the St. Sabina Parish Council. In 1997, she was honored as Senior Citizen of the Year for the entire state of Michigan. Ms. Horvath has lived a life dedicated to public service, and her example will long be appreciated by all those who have come in contact with her. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor the retirement of Ms. Margaret Horvath. May the kindness she has sought to share with others be returned to her many times
Thank you. I don't want to quit now.
Two more years, two more years, come back.
And finally, for Mr. Joseph Kaczynski, my neighbor for many years on Evangelite. Let it be known that it is a great pleasure to extend this expression of our thanks and best wishes to Mr. Joseph Kaczynski upon the occasion of his retirement from the Dearborn Heights City Council. With the commitment he has given to our state over his career, he has exhibited the highest standards of citizenship and unselfishness. Mr. Kaczynski was born June 18, 1929, in Detroit, Michigan. He graduated from St. Casimir High School in 1948, and two years later joined the United States Army, where he served admirably during the Korean conflict. Upon his honorable discharge in 1954, Mr. Kaczynski returned to marry the love of his life, Regina. Together, they had four children, Sharon, Robert, David, and Joseph. Mr. Kaczynski earned his degree from the University of Detroit College of Commerce and Finance in 1957 and worked in the pharmaceutical industry until his retirement in 1995. Mr. Kaczynski has shown a passion for service throughout his life. He and his young family moved to Dearborn Heights in 1960, and he began his public service career in 1974 on the City's Zoning Board of Appeals. In 1978, he was elected to the city council, serving. In 1978, he was elected to the city council, serving until 1999. He also served as council chairman from 1996 to 1999. Additionally, Mr. Kozinski sat on the Dearborn Heights General Government Pension Committee from 1993 to 2016. When an opening appeared on the city council in 2012, Mr. Kozinski was the one citizen entrusted to fill it. He was then elected to serve another four-year term. However, his dedication to service did not end there. Mr. Kozinski has been involved with numerous organizations. He has acted as a member of the Certified Medical Service Representatives Association, the Kiwanis Club, St. Linus Men's Club, Divine Child Men's Club, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, the Polish League of American Veterans Post-16, the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post-7546. This involvement, along with his long career, show Mr. Kozinski's deep dedication to public service and the community around him. Mr. Kozinski has treated people with respect and kindness, and his example will long be appreciated by all those who come into contact with him. In special tribute, therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to honor Mr. Joseph Kozinski as he retires from the Dearborn Heights City Council. May the kindness he has sought to share with others be returned to him many times over. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate that opportunity.
Senator, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Joe, one more.
Not a good joke.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, there are some individuals in the audience who have served many years, have given a lot to the city, and the city of Dearborn Heights wouldn't be what it is today without the particular service. And one of those people I want to recognize is Mayor Ruth Cantfield. Longtime council chairman and council member, Ken Barron. But I also want to recognize his wife, Sue, because she contributed a lot to the city. And I believe we have a former treasurer and council member out in the audience, another Kozinski, so thank you for your service, right? This has really been a spectacular night. I've noticed that some of us, so you can tell, those of us that have black and white pictures up on the wall, I think that tells how long we've been here, I think, so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Quickly, if anyone wants to get pictures, and then we'll commence with the rest of the meeting. The new council members, if you want to take pictures with the family.
Can leave.
No, let's get out of the wall.
Okay.
Oh, the new council members. I was going to say, we'll be here all night.
We'll stay around at the end. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Councilwoman Leesek Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve the order of business December 12, 2017, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council. This includes a replacement item for item 8A as submitted.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 28, 2017 meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move that the council approve the minutes of the formal meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council for November 28, 2017, as submitted.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Leesek Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 5, public hearing and comment on pending agenda items. Any comments on pending agenda items from anyone in the audience? Hearing none. The next item, item 6, fund transfers and current claims.
Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve current claims 6-1 through 638.
Support.
Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket, and then Councilman Abdullah.
I have a few of these that I have, and I'm sorry I didn't make any phone calls. I'm busy with some personal issues at home. And I have a question on 6-2, A-Land construction. It's requested by the Water Department and the Highway Department, and I'm not one with the account numbers here. These account numbers are foreign to me, and I don't know which one is coming out of what account. So, how much does water pay, and how much does the Highway Department pay? Does anybody know what that would be?
Councilman? The 592 account would be a water account. The 101 account is a general fund, which would be highway.
Okay, thank you. And then...
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to...on our monthly...
Cash flow report.
The numbers are there. I mean, the numbers that you're looking for are on that report.
That's why you're not supposed to be leaving. Okay? Thank you, I appreciate that. I will pull the book out next time and...
Yeah, that's where they are.
And look at that. So, I've got another one on 6-7. Again, it's the Water Department, and what I'm questioning is the certification of the boom truck. Now, we just had this two weeks ago about an aerial boom truck that's being repaired underwater when a boom truck, I mean, you use it to change light bulbs and trim trees. Again, I'm seeing $2,990 being charged to the Water Department, and I have no idea why you would do that. I have no idea.
I can help answer that. All the work that's done on our city vehicles by the city is, all the mechanics, they're all through the Water Department. All the inventory that they order goes through the Water Department. So, what my office does is, the mechanics, they submit invoices every month, and they keep track of those, they tell us who, what departments need to be charged for those, for that work. And then we go in at the end of each month and allocate those funds accordingly to the correct department. But the original charge and the original parts...
See, I don't like that. We just had a meeting about raising water rates, 7 point, whatever percent it is.
Six.
7.6%. And I'm not going to sit there and approve stuff when I don't know for sure it goes back, because I, you know, to hunt for those reports, I shouldn't have to hunt for those reports. And if we know this boom truck does not have anything to do with water, it should be charged accordingly right off the get-go. I can't, you know, last week I asked for, or two weeks ago, I asked for some documentation of it being changed over. I have yet to receive it. I could have gotten it in my mailbox, didn't. I received an email from Mr. Zimmer saying, oh, but I'd like to have some paperwork on it.
If you want to tell me what question or which invoices you have...
It was the same thing for the boom truck two weeks ago.
So, those invoices may not be allocated yet because it's still December. They don't, we won't get a copy of all the charges until January.
And I understand that.
Plank Moran does extensive auditing on the inventory accounts, and we didn't have any write-ups or any findings on that this year either.
I'm not saying that there's any hanky panky, but I'm sitting here looking at this, and I see charges to the Water Department. You know, that's just like somebody going to charge something to my house when there's nothing to charge for, and then I'm going to say I'm going to pay it back. I don't want the money to leave in the Water Department unless it absolutely has to.
Bill, do you have something you want to say?
Yes, I do, actually. I thought Big Daddy played an email. This is, it's just a blanket account. No money actually changes hands. No money gets pulled out of the Water Department or the Highway Department. These bills are submitted at the end of the month. The bills are given to the comptroller's office. It's just a blanket account, so we don't have to have redundancy. We have outlet invoices or requisitions for each of the departments. It's too much paperwork.
And, you know, I can live with something like that, but when I get something that says, "requested by Water Department," to me, that's coming from the Water Department, requested by Water.
And as I mentioned, it's just because it's a Water Department blanket account.
Well, why can't it be on a different blanket account?
Well, I mean, it could be that way, but we could have one for a Water Department, Highway Department, Building and Menus Department, and so on.
Well, I think that would be ideal, because this is the 21st century. It's not that difficult to do. Well, I mean, you know, it's a program. It's a simple access or whatever program you can put into your computer and do that.
And once these parts are purchased, the Water Department mechanics have to also install these parts in some cases, and then those hours need to be added to the sheets that get submitted to the comptroller's office.
Well, again, like I'm going to say, we're increasing the water budget, the water rates again, and we say we have the mechanics from the Water Department. Doggone it, if you're going to work on something else, then you charge it to that department. We can't just say there's a Water Department mechanic when he's working on a truck that belongs to somebody else. Then have him transfer that amount of work to somebody else, because I know I don't want to be paying the water bills anymore. They're killing me. And everyone here is a resident of this city, and we're paying the water bills, and I don't want to pay any more than what I have to. Just because you're a Water Department mechanic doesn't mean you get paid from the Water Department if you're working on somebody's truck that doesn't belong to the Water Department. That's the way I see it. And be it as it may, I may be wrong, but I'm sticking to my guns on it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mayor.
I see the point that the council member makes. It ultimately has to be purchased by either the Highway or Water Department. My guess is the reason it was selected for water rather than highway is because Act 51 monies are very restrictive. The ultimate goal, and I've had discussions with Plank Moran, is that ultimately the proper cost allocation is done to the proper department. And I think I can say that based upon audit and discussions, we think that those allocations are being properly made. It doesn't mean that we should not periodically, and we have every intent to take another look at the allocations, but I believe that's why they chose the water when they did, because Act 51 monies are very restrictive. And if you now started to have the Highway Department purchase everything with the allocation, while the councilman objects to it, we could have a problem with the state of Michigan. So, I don't know what the ultimate answer is, but every community has to deal with this, and the key is that the ultimate cost gets allocated to the right account.
You know, and I respectfully disagree. I, you know, it's just like, you know, one time I got an answer, and it was from you, Mr. Mayor, that everything at the DPW is owned by the Water Department. And that, to me, is more of a, that everybody should be paying the Water Department. Just like I own a house, you live in it, I don't pay you to live in it, you pay me to live in it. So, you should be paying more to the Water Department. That's the way I see it. Now, I could beat this, I guess, this horse from now to kingdom come and get nowhere, but that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Anything further on fund transfers and current claims?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question for the recreation director, kind of rival, on item 6-4. Okay, on there, on that particular one, there was removal of a chain-link enclosure and overgrown vegetation, and it was an invoice on 11-5-2017, taken out of capital outlay for $3,250. And just looking through that, for overgrown vegetation, and I know they got rid of a chain-link fence, too, I just wanted to get a little bit of an explanation as to why the bill's so high. Seems quite extensive for, you know, for what I was looking at.
Well, I don't know how, if you're that familiar with the site, it was the old tennis courts down at Swatka Park, and the vegetation that was overgrowing there were actually trees that were actually growing out of the tennis court. So, there was a lot more that had to be done than just some minor vegetation. These were actually vines and were growing into the fence almost the entire circumference of the tennis courts, and then, of course, taking down all the chain-link fence, and then disposing of everything, too. There was disposal bees and things like that. I thought it was a very fair price.
Okay, no, no, no. In that particular, it's a little different.
And basically, it's just, I broke, I decided to go ahead, we're going to eventually replace those tennis courts, but we've been getting complaints from those neighbors, and rightly so, that it was very blight, and so I had money in the capital outlay account towards that project. So, I went ahead and started the project with this vendor to get at least that part cleaned up, and then we're going to continue to proceed with the project.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All those in favor of approving the fund transfers and current claims, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It's six yeses, and Councilman Musket was no. The next item, item 7A, advertisement for bids, fire hoses and nozzles from Fire Chief Brogan.
Mr. Chair.
Chairman.
Councilman Musket.
I move, counsel, to concur with Chief Brogan, to start the bid process to purchase hoses and nozzles for both stations. The anticipated cost to be around $21,000 as outlined in 7A.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 7B, tabulation of bids. Fiscal year 2016, Berwin Center Improvement Phase II Window Replacement Project from our Community and Economic Development Director, Joe Hoshen.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I move that the council approve the, recommend, accept and approve the most qualified bid proposal for CBBG fiscal year 2016, Berwin Center Improvement Phase II Window Replacement Project, and award the bid to Dynamic Lasing Systems in the amount of $142,200, subject to their timely submittal of all required documents to the CEDD per the instructions in the bid packet. And in addition, I author, please authorize the comptroller's office, the council, please comptroller's office, to return all bid bonds to the bidder and have the mayor and city clerk sign four copies of the signature page of the contract as outlined in 7B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8A, reports from the mayor, from Mayor Palitko, appointment to the Local Officers Compensation Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, counsel, concur with Mayor Palitko regarding the appointment of personnel listed in 88 to the Local Officer Compensation Commission. Details spelled out in 88, letter dated 12/5/17.
Do you have to state the names, though?
Second by Councilwoman Horvath. Any discussion? Go ahead if you want to.
Well... Council Chair.
Yes.
There is an updated letter.
We've got that.
Updated 12/12. The councilman said 12/5.
The letter I have...
And the updated letter dated 12/12.
Tell me the names.
If you want, yeah, go ahead.
The three names on there are Jack Franzel of 5601 Edgewood in Dearborn Heights, 48125, Steve Henry of 8305 Colonial, Dearborn Heights, 48127, and Roy Pilot of 26722 Constance, Dearborn Heights, 48127.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
When I was recognizing past individuals, elected officials, I neglected to mention Roy Pilot. I apologize, but he served on this council.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8B, also from Mayor Palitko, Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association Agreement, an extension of agreement benefits to non-union employees.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, the council, concur with the mayor with regard to the public service employees' contract to be expected to... contract to be expected to expire for the period 2016 through 2021, and to extend the benefits here garnered for the organized employees to those who are independent and not organized.
Support.
Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket, and then Councilman Abdullah.
I want to vote yes on this contract, but I believe there should be two motions here, one for the contract and one for the agreement to, to all non-union employees, with the exception of the pension changes. That should be a separate motion. Back in February 23, 216, I had sent a letter to the council and to Mr. Mayor to request other people negotiate our contracts. Again, in June 8, 216, I submitted another letter, and I stated that we may be violating Michigan compiled law 15.321 and possibly 15.322 because of conflicts there of people who negotiated contracts getting those benefits.
Okay, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Hold on.
On that particular thing. You cited some numbers that you can, did you call them, or did you do your?
I researched tho, I researched those.
And what did you find out?
And, well, the Michigan compiled law states that people who negotiate contracts can't benefit from those contracts. So that was the reason why I had brought up the original letter, okay? And then again, on June 8, where I actually put those down, and, no, I guess, and no one looked at it. So, but I believe that this should be separated. We could vote on the contract, and then look at that again another time.
Well, then, my question is, you're always touting Ford Motor Company. You're always touting the union at Ford Motor Company. The guys that do the contract at Ford, Chrysler, wherever, they benefit from the contract?
Which side? The union or the company side?
Either side.
Well, I, I.
Normally, it's the union.
But this is a private, and you're talking, you're talking public and private, okay?
But they do the same thing at Ford.
But it's public and private. You're talking about Michigan compiled law stating for us, not for Ford Motor Company or for Chrysler or anybody else in the union.
City Attorney Gary Miyaki, do you have any thoughts on any, whether it should be one motion or separate motion extended to the non-union personnel?
I think it's something that can end up being done either way. I don't see that there is necessarily a problem with adopting it as suggested in the mayor's letter dated November 28. In terms of the issue that Councilman Musket is raising, I'm not familiar with the issue that he's specifically raising in this context, so I don't have any opinion on that, at least at this moment.
Yeah, if I recall, there was, I remember the issue well, and I remember looking at the statute, and we had the Labor Council here, the two ladies, Sue Bartosz and.
Well, there's five negotiators from the city side. It was myself, my assistant, Christina Laszlo, the comptroller attended, and also human resources. And I don't think they benefit as department heads and the attorney. So that's our five-person, I don't benefit from this, nor does the department heads. They would come under a separate situation, I think.
But I do know in the past that you had this in a separate letter.
I certainly don't object. The reason that this format was used, this is how the council adopted the court agreement, but I certainly have no objection to it being two separate motions. We took the same layout that the court used. There was no intent to, other than that. We just, since there was no objection at that time, we thought there'd be no objection with the same format, but it could have been done twice.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Were you all set, March? Were you all set?
I'm done.
Okay, but just for Council Gary, the particular clause that's pertaining to this is, this says, "A public servant shall not be party directly or indirectly to a contract with the public entity of which he or she is an officer or an employee," MCL 15.322. That's one that Councilman Musket is speaking of.
I'm familiar with the stat.
Are you familiar with the particular one?
Yes, I am familiar with the stat.
Yeah, so we have two issues here.
It's more in this context that I'm not necessarily familiar. Here's, here's what I would say. I don't necessarily see the problem that's being raised from the standpoint that the contract and the people who are receiving under this particular contract are not necessarily the ones who are, like, the mayor is not a member of the bargaining unit and so on and so forth. There can be more of an issue, to be frank, with respect to one individual whose spouse is a member of the bargaining unit. That I would, I would want to look at more closely before I would end up giving an opinion. If Labor Council has already looked at it, though, I don't know that there is any issue that I would need to look at. In other words, I would, I would not necessarily disagree with Labor Council in coming to an opinion with regard to that, but I would not want to make any sort of hasty opinion with regard to the issue, because I can understand then the concern of, of the councilmen, but at the same time, I'm not necessarily in a position right now, without looking at it further, to be able to end up passing on the issue.
So, but right now, our issue is whether it's be one motion or two motions, and it sounds like there's agreement that it'd be two motions.
Well. But I think Councilman Ray said he wants it separated and on a different date.
Well, it could be separated, and I don't know if we'd be able to vote on that without having corporate council look at it. Now, this is not my decision, this is a decision of the whole body here, you know.
Yeah, well, we had study sessions on the agreement. I remember when this issue came up, and I remember we scheduled to have the Labor Council here, but I don't know having.
And I don't think they ever commented on it. I, you know, I had brought it up, they never came back and said yea or nay, either way. Now, I didn't want it to get to this point. I thought we'd have a separate, you know, when, previously, I do remember you had, had done this in two separate motions, so that's what I was waiting for, but I saw it like this, so I brought it up. Now, this honorable body here can vote on that how they please. It'd just be bringing it up. That's all.
We, we had the study session. I think we can vote, make it two motions and vote, and then we can still look into that issue, you know, going forward. We, we heard the terms of the contract, this is the first year, the city's going to comply with the hard cap, and there's some changes, and we discussed those. Then, separate from that, you know, going forward, I think that that's an important issue, you know, always to be looked at.
But I do believe it's up to the complete council to say if it is two motions or not. Just not my opinion.
Right. No, and I think there's concurrence that'll be two motions. So why don't we, we can vote.
I don't know if we had concurrences of two motions. We got one motion on the floor now, so.
So if the maker of the motion wants to amend their motion?
That would be up to them, and then I would, I would, you know, go with how the council wants to vote. I mean, I'm just one person.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
I have a question. We have two motions on this agenda item. The first one is to approve the agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association. The second is to extend those benefits to the non-union employees. So what we would have to do, or what I'm hearing here, is because there is an objection to one of the attending negotiators, that the contract itself with the public employees would go down. You'd vote it down, is basically what I'm hearing, you'd vote it no. So that would automatically negate the fact that this motion is going to extend it to the non-union employees. Now, if you approve, if we do break this down, and you do approve it to the employees themselves, the association, then what prevents you from extending it to the non-union employees? What you're going to vote on here is either a yea or a nay, period.
I, both motions, though.
So what?
Well, so, so wait a minute. You have the same person that participated in that contract negotiation, which I don't think influenced anything other than.
I'm not saying it did or it didn't. I'm just saying there is an MCL law with it there.
Duly noted. Duly noted. The point I'm trying to make is, you either want to approve the contract or not. That's the question. If you approve the contract, we're going to extend it to the non-union employees.
Not necessarily so.
Then that's the issue. It hasn't had anything to do with who participated in that negotiation.
Again, it's not, not directed at any individual person.
Yes, it is. Wait, wait. I think we have three issues. I think we have three issues. I think we have the contract.
The contract needs to be a or a.
With the bargaining unit, okay. Number two, extending it to the non-union employees, and then number three, the separate issue that.
No, there's no number three. It's just one or two, that's it. There's two, there's two different things here.
Okay. I say that's.
Now, the third, the third issue would be whether we're going to have, vote on these separately.
No, the third issue is, does that person that participated in the bargaining affect the outcome of this contract?
I, I know I'm going to vote this contract, yes. The contract, I like the contract.
Then it doesn't make sense to me.
But again, but, but again, there could be a violation in here the way this is brought up.
Well, then, why don't we vote? Why don't we have the?
This is all I'm saying.
The two votes, and then we can refer that to corporation counsel.
And that's exactly how, you know, it, it could be, and, and until, you know, we get a, you know, an opinion letter from the corporate council, and then we go from there. The contract's a good contract.
Mr. Chair, what is it that we want to do here?
So we'll have, we'll have, motion one, approve the contract with the bargaining unit. Motion two, extending it to non-union employees. And then, Councilman Musket's issue, which was raised before in the letters, refer that to corporate counsel.
To be approved contingent upon his.
No, I don't know, to be approved, to, to be looked into further and to have possibly.
Report back to the, to the council, I think, will be at the next regular meeting. And, and I don't know if there would be any further ramifications with respect to anything having to do with that.
But reporting back's not going to change anything if we've already voted on it.
Correct. Yeah, I say.
It'll only be for future purposes.
Mr. Chairman, can you make the, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, that second piece, can't you make that part of the motion, refer it back to Counselor Miyaki for your opinion, because of the MCL that's being quoted here?
No. This, this was not brought up in any study session back in the early part. You asked me as a mayor to sit through every session, which I did not think it was necessary, but I took your advice, and I made a point, and I was at every, every union meeting with all the different groups. There is no conflict of interest on this matter, but let me tell you, because we had two meetings, and there were some issues on pensions, all of the increases are already into the payroll system to pay these people, because if you will all remember, there are significant reductions in health care. You have some people out here that are really hurting. We do not pay a lot of wages to new hires, and the offset to those increases in the health care, as Elizabeth explained to you, is baked into some of these increases. You will be hurting a lot of employees, non-union employees, who are starting at, at wages that almost qualify for welfare benefits. I, I, please do not make at, at the ninth inning with two strikes and two outs, you can't make this change at this point. I don't know if there's enough time for the payroll to be redone.
We're talking about different things, so let's first vote on the, the.
No. It's up to him.
No, no, wait a minute. Has a motion been made on this agenda item? Who made the motion? Who supported it? Councilman Kozinski. Okay, let's call a vote. No other, no other conversation can take place. We'll call a vote. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
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 Those opposed?
Done.
The ayes have it. Anything further on that item?
Was that unanimous, Ray?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I think just, I've said this before, but just for clarification purposes for the audience, on a lot of these contracts, we do not vote on them right here, right now, and we do vote on them, I should say, but we've had two or three study sessions typically before we get to this particular part of it where we do vote on them, so, because you do get some residents sometimes that say, how do you guys vote these contracts in right away? And just for clarification, we've had ourselves as a council, two or three study sessions, but of course, negotiating team, multiple, multiple hours on this, just for clarification. Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
And one other thing. I think the, the hard work that was done on this contract, it was wonderful. I mean, you guys did the best that you can, you could do with the tools that God gave us here and the funds that we have. And I, I don't, didn't want to vote this contract down at all. I thought it was a, a good contract for both sides, but I just wanted to make sure that we had all our i's dotted and t's crossed with this. I don't want to be come back and bit later and say we did something wrong. And, and I'm sorry if it ruffled some feathers, but it is what it is, and I brought it up, and I believe in it. There's, the, the compiled laws are there for a reason. I didn't make them up. They were there on, on the books. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Councilman Musket.
And maybe, maybe in the future, our corporate council can look at that and then put a letter out saying on how it really is. I mean.
Didn't we get a letter or something from one of the labor attorneys?
I know I had conversations after the issue came up, but I don't want to, that was so many months ago, I don't recall, but if it was a problem, we would have changed the committee that we had negotiating, and I did not change it. But we ended up that my direct involvement, and by reporting back to all the council members, I don't know, I don't see any conflict of interest. In fact, a lot of the employees didn't like the fact that they had to sign up for new health care, which was the major thing, because we were one of the few communities that did not take public Act 152, which all these crazy laws coming out of Lansing are taking benefits away from employees, and I personally find that offensive. Negot, collective bargaining ought to happen at, at the local table, not up in Lansing.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Councilwoman Horvath.
Councilman Musket says maybe, and that's the word, maybe we can get a, an opinion from the council, the corporate, corporation council. No, maybe. Do you want one? You request it.
Yes, I do want one, thank you.
Well, then you request it.
I request, I request something from corporate council that we have something in it for the future.
And I have some background on that.
The motion has been made on this at this point, but moving forward, I think that it's a reasonable request.
So, Councilman Musket, you can do a letter to the, to me or whosoever, the council chair, and it'll be, yeah, it'll be forwarded to the city attorney. The next item on the agenda, item 8C, also from Mayor Pletko, annual permit for special events.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
I move city council concur with Mr. Pletko and authorize the 2018 applications for annual permits and performance resolutions to be authorized as outlined in 8C, and also authorize Bill Zimmer, public service directors, to sign the documents on behalf of the city.
Second.
Second. Second by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8D, also from Mayor Pletko, appointments to the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Receive note and file. So move to receive note and file Mayor Dan Pletko's correspondence for the appointments to the planning commission is submitted in 8D.
Second. Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Would you like to announce who those new appointees are?
Please, go ahead.
Okay, the appointments include Waseem Fadella.
Waseem.
I'm sorry, what, all right, very good. Ali Abdullah and Kevin Miller. All residents of Dearborn Heights, terms expire December 2020.
Thank you.
And thank you to the individuals that are being replaced.
John Gerolamo and incoming councilman Tom Wensel.
And Rick Coogan for his service.
And Rick Coogan.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item, item 9A, reports from city officials. The next item, item 9A, reports from city officials from our clerk Walter Praschevitz. Annual publication amended notice of meetings as required under Public Act 267 of 1986.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Council agree with city clerk Walter Praschevich and agree to.
Receive note and file. Receive note and file.
We don't have to, no.
City Council has to authorize?
I think we have to.
I think we have to authorize it.
The amended.
Yeah, I think we.
Amended meeting.
To accept the amended meeting notice.
As to the Public Act 267 of 1976. All details spelled out in item 9A with signature of Walter Praschevich on December 4, 2017.
Support?
Support by Councilman Barry, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9B, from Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, reappointments to the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
I move council move that the Southwest Michigan Council of Government, SMCOG, reinstate Lisa Hicks Clayton and Council Chair Robert Constant. They expire this month. I would request your approval to reappoint his delegates. And Robert Constant is alternate for another one-year term to expire 12/20/2018.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9C, from Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton, Michigan Municipal League Newly Elected Officials Training.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
I move City Council approve expenditure in the amount of $285 to be paid from Dearborn Heights City Council education budget. That's $95 per person for our council-elect members to attend the Michigan Municipal League Newly Elected Official Training as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Support by Councilman Barry, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Based on the detailed discussion we've just witnessed, I wonder if it would be appropriate to have an in-service day for new council members, as well as those who are remaining, to come up to speed with regard to some of the details that are going to be necessary to understand before you go to an academic environment. That will give you some experience here at base level to understand and look for certain details in that formal academic environment for what you're going to pay.
I'll bless you.
I would be, I'm in favor of getting educational background for new people, but there ought to be some kind of system of the in-service day for employees who are coming on for the first time, so that there's a benefit of understanding what the details might be that they're going to witness in that formal session.
You might, Councilwoman Horvath, how much was COCO in that training? Do you remember?
$1,400.
Three?
$1,400.
Fourteen? $1,400.
We will get the videotape version.
Video tape version.
Mr. Chairman.
The CD. Councilwoman Clayton.
I do agree with Councilman Kozinski, there's, when you come into this position, getting up to speed is very important. The newly elected official training, I know there's three of us that have attended it, at least three, maybe even more. But I do agree, there's elements that are detailed to this city and our community. And that would include meeting with Plant Moran, for example, which I remember when I was elected, that was really good. We talked about what they do. We talked with Wade Trim as well. That is what I would like, I think would be great to see for our newly elected. That's that piece that's specific for the city of Dearborn Heights.
Yeah, Plant Moran will have something in August. They'll have a training. Sometimes for, you know, benefit of people of heavy work schedule, you can watch some of these on a webinar.
Yeah, and a lot of these are online, on a webinar, including parliamentary procedures. They'll actually go through a lot of that at the newly elected training. This is a three to four-hour training. And then after that, there's always the weekend trainings that they have, the weekender. There's the Level One and the Level Two, so there's always training opportunities. And I would encourage our elected officials to take advantage of those.
Yeah, and then they'll get access to the MML website and. Councilman Barry?
I was just going to say that it's all great, but I think what most new council members have their largest struggle with is making a motion at the table. I know that there are still, you know, people that hesitate to make motions because of how it's written and what key words to pick out to make those motions. So I extended myself to a council member and asked if he would like to sit down here soon so we can go over a packet and just review or help educate him on how to make a motion moving forward. So I think if anybody at this table would like to reach out to any newcomers, I think it'd be a great idea. I'm sure they'd appreciate it after getting up on this table.
Oh, great, yeah. I'd like to represent you to do that. Thank you, Councilman Barry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9D, from Public Service Administrator Zimmer, 2017, 2018, street repair program.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move council agree with Public Service Administrator regarding the 2017 to 18 street repair contract to include Silvery Lane and George Streets in the amount of $1,813,940 plus an engineering fee cost at a level of $150,000.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abdullah, any discussion?
Is outlined in 9D.
Is outlined in 9D.
Thank you.
2017.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9E, from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, Annapolis Avenue Water Main Improvement Design Authorization.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move council concur and agree with Public Service Administrator Zimmer regarding the operation of waterline replacement and repair along Annapolis Avenue. And be authorized to get the appropriate permits to conduct this project of improvements. Also a $50,000 allocation for engineering fees, all detailed in 9E dated 12/17.
Support?
Support by Councilman Barry, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9F, from Recreation Director Ken Gribble, appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I would like to concur with Director Gribble and appoint Mr. Gary Barkoff to the open position on the Parks and Recreation Commission. As a side note, I've known Mr. Barkoff probably 50 years. And he's District Seven.
Yes, yes.
As outlined in 9F.
Second.
Support by Councilman Barry, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9G, also from Recreation Director Ken Gribble, appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move to concur with Parks and Recreation Director Kenneth Gribble and approve the appointment of Mr. Justin Toth to the Parks and Recreation Commission, term to expire September 30, 2018 as outlined in 9G.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, any discussion? Both members are here. Both members long been involved with recreation in Dearborn Heights. Justin's been a coach of tennis and what else?
Some for hockey years back, been involved in basketball, bowling, football, Saturday during the winter time.
Oh, great, great. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9H, from Police Chief Lee Gavin, purchase of 50 portable radios. Councilman Musket.
I move City Council concur with Chief Lee Gavin in the purchase of 50 portable radios and four remote mount mobile radios. Is a cost of $233,738.98. He has $195,000 in this year's budget under capital outlay. The remaining balance of $38,738.98 will be paid out on a budget year for 2018-19 as outlined in 9H.
Second by Councilman Kozinski, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question for Police Chief Lee Gavin. You had anticipated $195,000 on the budget, but then we have $233,738. And that's a pretty drastic difference of almost $40,000, $38,738 to be exact. Why was there such a big difference?
Just a price increase. So over time, when we put it in the budget originally, it was one price. Price has gone up. We bought a few more radios. The payment plan was better to get a few more instead of spreading it over two budget years. So that's why we got 50.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9I, from Corporation Council Gary Miyatki, Warren Valley Golf Course Assignment Agreement, liquor license and participation agreement.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move council concur with Corporation Council Miyatki with regard to the details outlined in 9A regarding class C license and long-term arrangements of the licensing for the Warren Valley golf course. The language to be used is on the backside of the letter dating very specific language so that nothing is left to imagination.
As outlined in 9I?
As outlined in 9I.
Second.
As outlined in 9I. Second by Councilman Musket, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a question for Council Gary Miyatki. This does not, one of the things that we talked about in regards to Warren Valley is that we're going to be getting, we're going to be putting in and out for an RFP to get a new, well, not necessarily get a new management company, but a possibility of a new management company. And in this thing here, it states this is up to September 30, 2021. I just want to clarify, it is not committing us to up to that year for sure.
No, per the assignment agreement, basically we take the position that the county has.
So it's the same dates the county had?
Yeah, that the concession agreement that the county has. Concession agreement that the county has permits for it to end up being terminated by the county upon 30 days' notice. I do want to caution, however, that we would probably be smart to discuss the matter with the county if we do end up doing anything with regard to changing the concession year, just to make sure that there's not going to be a potential issue in the future.
But this does not, and I'm not necessarily saying, yeah, it does not commit us. Okay, all we have to do is just give it 30-day notice.
This is a little more trickier than one.
Well, the reason I want to clarify this, because obviously we purchased this golf course and, well, not completely consummated yet, but it's going in that direction. But either way, I just want to make sure, one of the things that we talked about is we may be, you know, we're going to be looking at everything at that particular golf course to make sure that we make it a little bit more profitable and a little bit more enjoyable for a lot of the residents. And amongst the things that we're going to be looking at is up to and including the current management. So I just want to make sure that we have the right to be able to change it if that's the direction that we decided to go as a council.
We would have the same right that the county would end up having.
Which is 30-day notice.
Right. But my sense would be that we would also want to discuss the matter with the county to make sure that there wouldn't end up being any sort of unusual issues. I had discussions with Eric and he had some concerns when this originally was being raised.
So when you say we will have discussions, I mean, will you be doing that then?
Presumably, yes.
Okay, great.
Presumably, I would be. But I think it would be something where I would probably want to discuss it more in a closed session or in a study session.
Understandable.
There are certain wrinkles with this that are kind of unusual.
So we're going to step in the shoes of the county.
That is correct.
But this same concessionaire manager also manages Inkster Valley, which is going to remain a county facility.
That is correct. And the only issue becomes whether or not they, an argument could be made by Onida saying that you have to have both of them in place. My sense is that's why we would discuss things with the county if there was an issue.
If with my reelection, Mr. Miyatki's reappointment as Corporation Counsel will be on the January agenda, so there will be that continuity with legal counsel. But I would expect discussions, most likely in a closed session, with the attorney as it relates to the facility and maybe even the inclusion of Plant Moran's Crest outfit, who had recommended certain items as related to the management. So I think we'll get that, all that input together as a group.
Right. My concern is, I was not ready to commit up to 2021. For a management company that, you know, I for myself at least have not had an opportunity to be able to discuss with them.
And we would step into the same shoes as the county. We have a right to terminate with or without cause. But again, it would be something that would, if that was done, it'd need to be carefully done. My discussions with Eric were there would be nothing that would be imminently done and that we would essentially have a participation agreement with them to continue the management and to end up using the liquor license that would be there, which if we were going to change from that, we would need to make sure that we'd have enough lag time ahead of that to make any such change.
Okay.
And I did want to, I don't want to say anything to cause him to panic with regard to this type of an issue. At the same time, I'm trying to be clear with you that we would have those types of options in the future. I just want to be careful about what I say so it's not misinterpreted and he doesn't panic about something.
Sure. And the second question I had for Council Miyatki, you have a charge on here of $5,000 in fees and expenses, which may be required to effectuate the course of action concerning the liquor licenses.
That would be up to. There's.
Frankly, I had a concern, it seemed a little high.
About $2,000 in fees, I know that the city will end up having to pay just to the Liquor Control Commission. It may be less than that for any other expense because Mike Melvin has indicated that we should not have a problem with having to get a separate bond in order to take care of things for the Liquor Control Commission. But I want to make sure that we have that latitude in case we need to do that. Because what we're looking at is doing this assignment agreement, applying for a conditional license, applying for the transfer of the Class C golf course license. Once we get the conditional license, we can close and then we can end up going forward. And that only takes 20 days on the conditional license. So we need to make sure, and you're not going to be in session for part of it, namely, the honorable body will not be. So I want to make sure that the city has the latitude to be able to pursue that in the meantime. And that's why I came up with the figure, about twice as much as what I'm anticipating we would need.
Right, because it seemed quite honestly, quite high, so. Okay, then the last question I had for you, just for clarification, for the liquor license, it would not be the management company to apply for this, would be us?
The way it's going, and I went through about five different people over at the Liquor Control Commission. I did this previously and then I was revisiting this more recently. And I ended up receiving information that was different from what I had originally been told. But I talked to the director this time after talking to about three other people. And the director indicated that because this is a Class C golf course liquor license, it's not transferable to another location. It's only for that particular location. And if the county, so to speak, goes out of business at that location before there's a conditional license, then they'd have to surrender the license. So essentially, we had to do some things a bit differently than one would anticipate.
Well, I'm concerned because of liability. Let me explain what I mean. So if I purchased a building and I leased it out to Robert's Bar, it seems to me like he would apply for a liquor license, not myself, if I owned a building.
Well, here's what has to happen. It's either the county has to end up applying, but we would end up essentially standing in and using the. in and using the license on a conditional basis. So, essentially, we're the ones who are going to end up potentially operating things after the closing takes place. So, it's really on us to end up having the potential responsibility and liability.
And not the management company.
Well, the management company would end up having a cross indemnification obligation to us.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But the way the license was done originally was with the county and Tory management, then they ended up having ONIDA specifically with regard to that. But now, based on what the Liquor Control Commission is saying, it sounds like it should be us with ONIDA under our participation agreement. I'm sure you're familiar with participation and management agreements from your dealings with, with commercial transactions. So, that's where the latest is with regard to this, per the direction that I was given.
Okay. Thank you, Council. Any further, thank you, Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is from Corporation Council Gary Miyatki, Proposed Resolution Concerning Long-Term Maintenance of the Stormwater Management System Vista Maria.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move that the Council agree with concurrence of the mayor and the documentation first by Corporation Council to approve the attached resolution as a substantial agreement with Vista Maria and also for the parties regarding the long-term management stormwater system at the Vista Maria location. All detailed in 13A.
Second. Second by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion?
Council Chair, if, there should be a specific notion made in the motion. It's in the resolution, but I want to make sure we're not going to have a problem that Mr. Zimmer also be authorized to sign the permit on behalf of the city.
To adopt the resolution.
Yeah. It's in the resolution, but we had a holdup on this. I want to make sure there's not going to end up being a problem.
So, to adopt the resolution.
If you adopt the resolution.
Mrs. Zimmer is the signature for the contract.
On the permit.
Thank you.
Everything else in the resolution should.
What was your support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 13A from Martin, Martin, pronounce your last name.
Olanick.
Olanick, Plant Moran, 2017, 2018 water budget projects and independent accountants' report on applying agreed-upon procedures.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move that the Council agree with concurrence of the mayor and the support of the document presented by Plant Moran to address the additional costs regarding water rates pegged at about 7.25% and the minimum bill at about a level of 6%, all defined in 13A.
Mr. Chairman, for clarification, 7.26%.
7.26%.
Mm-hmm. You said 7.25.
Are we, excuse me, I apologize, but.
Yeah, no, it's, we're, I guess, adopting the rates.
I don't see where there is an actual, am I missing something here? I don't see where the rates are adopted. I think we're receive, note, and file the report, are we not?
Mayor?
No, no, you, you have.
It doesn't say here.
Let's take concur up here.
I understand where it says concur, but showing, this is, this is, this report just shows the average utility bill increasing to 7.26%. I'd like to see if there's a motion anywhere or documentation saying that we will be raising the water rates an additional 7.26%. I'm just saying there's nothing here that plainly states that.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
The verbal statement with regard to the document, 13A, was concurrence of the mayor and was added.
I'm showing answers.
By the speaker to indicate that this accommodates a 7.25 and was corrected to 7.26 as the formal increase and the minimum bill at about 6%. This document supports the necessity, all of the expenses that are listed here supports the necessity of the increase of the water levels to the indicated percentage levels of increase as mentioned in the motion.
You're, you're correct, and, and I agree what you're saying the intent is. But the document that we have in front of us is agreed-upon procedures in a report showing that the necessity exists for an increase of 7.26%. And I apologize to the administration if I throw a wrench in here, but there needs to be something that plainly states, "We, the City Council, approve to a water rate increase of 7.26% based on the report given by Plant Moran on such and such a day," as outlined in 13A. I don't have that in front of me right now.
The closest to that is page three.
No, that can't get close. I need something specific, and I apologize.
What Councilman Abdullah was saying was what I was just going to say, the proposed rates are set forth on page, page three.
The proposed rates are set forth on page three.
Yes.
Which is 7.26% and an increase in the minimum bill of just over 6%.
Okay, this, again, we can go ahead and approve it. I don't have a problem with it, but I'm telling you, this 13A, he's approving a procedures report. There's nothing here that states.
Yeah, to say, so, for example, to concur with the mayor and the recommendations of Plant Moran, blah, blah, blah.
And maybe approve the rates set forth on page three of the communication dated whenever this was dated.
That's what I'd like to motion to read.
Effective January 1st, 2018.
So move.
Support.
Support. Councilman Kozinski, did you hear the suggested language?
The motion's on the table now. You've got to sort that out.
So, we can amend your motion to include that.
Yeah, I can amend the motion to include.
From the page three.
Of getting of these new rates and it's January 1st of 2018 and the other clerical detail that you have too. And I'm willing to do so so that we can get this off the table.
Mr. Abdullah, you supported that?
Support.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nope.
Again, six yeses and one nay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. There was significant discussion about allocating certain expenses to the water budget. We all sat here and listened to the details of this presentation by Plant Moran. There is nothing here that prohibits some of the conversation that was presented regarding the placement or processing of expenses through the water system, which will then be further processed by the Controller's Office to tie the expense to the appropriate accounts with any regard for concern as to whether they're coming all out of water or whatever. There is sufficient reason for these adjustments to take place, and the evidence of that is a listing of the expenses that are budgeted here in this document.
Thank you. Any, the next item on the agenda, item 13B from Attorney Jennifer Hill with Seacrest Wardle, Proposed Food Truck Ordinance. And the, the letter said to put on a future agenda. I did a letter, and I think I gave it to everyone, that the, asking that the proposed ordinance be on the agenda for the next council meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Clayton.
Can we make a motion to consider this read for the first time and then refer it to study session, please?
Support.
We can.
Support.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. As former Chairman Ken Barron would say, so, well, that ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Any announcements from anybody at the table?
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman.
Councilwoman Horvath.
I have a speech. Well, here it is, time to say goodbye. After 23 years of serving this great city, I have a few things to say, as usual, before it's official. First, I want to thank my family for always encouraging me and never questioning why I do this, although I did question myself once in a while. For 23 years, my family supported me 100%. They're all over here, and there's one down there taking a picture. Would you please stand up? Would my family stand up? They don't mind me like the council does. I enjoyed working with the present council as well as all of the past council members. We made some very important decisions in the past 23 years. I want to thank all of the department heads. You always answered any questions I had to the best of your ability, doing your best to fix the concerns of the citizens that I went to you for help with. Of course, a well-run office doesn't get that way without good staff. Thank you all. To all of the citizens who had faith in me and elected me to the council five times, I couldn't have done it without your vote. I would personally like to thank the Fire Department and the Police Department for fully participating in the Good Fellow Project, which was close to my heart. This is one of the projects that would not have worked without their help. There is no doubt about it. I would like to remember the late Mayor Van Houten. He was the one who initially got me to run for the council. Then he lost, and I won, and I hardly knew where City Hall was located, and I was on my own. To Mayor Canfield, who took me at my word when I kept saying, "I can do that job." She hired me as her assistant, and within a week, I knew it wasn't the job for me.
But she did it great.
Ken Barron is here tonight as our former council chair. Thank you for keeping me on the straight and narrow. He made me see the light when I was ready to kill somebody. And to Mayor Plitko, thank you for your knowledge and all you do for this city, so much of which people are not aware of. And believe it or not, I'm not engaged to him. He's too young for me.
That sucks.
And again, thanks to all of you for your faith in me. You'll never know what it means to me, and I love all of you. If you ever need anything, call me. I know how to get through. Thank you.
And this is, this is from all the council people.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. Not that one.
Denise.
Oh, sorry. I'll head up Denise, you said.
Yes, Denise. We're thanking Denise. She's retiring.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Can please?
I know Margaret's family's got flowers for her, I believe. Director Haslam?
Good evening, everyone. I have a quick announcement. It hasn't been a long night. The Community and Economic Development will be holding its first public hearing in late January. We sent a notice to the clerk. We're waiting for his answer to schedule us for a hearing. Basically, what I want to do, I just want to let you know that we are out for, we sent some communication to all city council people. We published it in the papers that we are basically accepting proposals for our fiscal year 2018. So, if you have any proposals that you'd like to use block grant, please either reach out to myself, call me at my numbers, call the department, or go to our site. We have the application pretty much spelled out. If you need any help, don't hesitate to call any of us. Our door is always open. I did bring some extra copies for the new elected officials. I'll pass it around afterwards. So, welcome, and if you have any questions, please call on me or on our department. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I had some. We have some other announcements.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Councilman Barry.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. First, I want to say that I'm really humbled by the recognition I received tonight. I certainly didn't expect it. I would like to say thank you to each and every employee in this city that I've come in contact with, I've had the honor to come in contact with, and I've had the pleasure of working with somehow through, through it all. It wasn't necessarily the differences that occurred at the city as much as it was the way we were able to work it out. And for that, I want to go on to say that the employees of this city are really underappreciated. And I know that the administration and the council would like to see that they be, I have to put it this way, paid for what they do, and I think they're, they are underpaid, but we certainly appreciate it as residents. We'd see a tax increase if, in fact, we were to pay them what they were worth. The council members, thank you for your patience over the years. I'd like to reach out to each one of them and address them by name, but they'd just take too long, and I know I forget too many people. I can only say thank you so much for everything that you've done for me, the patience you've showed me, and I appreciate the role that I've played in the city. I can't say it's been easy, and I hope those newly-elected council people that come on board take this serious and do what's expected of them, and I tell you, you're in good hands. So, other than that, I really don't have, other than to say thank you very much for everything you've done for me. Appreciate you.
Just going to say that I believe in the Father of all life, who provides us with many good things. And you would have to sit here for a couple hours to listen to a list of the good things that I have been privileged to have. Too few of you have ever met my bride of 62 years. Please stand. Where is she?
She's left.
She's up to your high and drop.
Looks like a guy.
So much for 62 years.
Why don't you ladies just stand up and take your place real quick?
We are all sent here on earth to serve each other. And for me, this has been my contribution to the mandate to serve others. There are many things, as I said earlier, that come to mind, and one of those is that you have to have the support of family to come here and participate in activities at various levels of responsibility. I first started in 1973. Many of you have not been here. If you do the arithmetic, that's 43 years. That's half of my lifetime and 2/3 of my life as a husband to my wife. There is always a necessity to put things off, and my family has always conformed to the responsibility, and they too subscribe to the responsibility that we have when we are born, to serve others. With regard to taking advantage. With regard to taking advantage and fulfilling the obligations of public service, I have learned much more than the textbook was able to teach me. I had the privilege of sitting and making decisions with mayors, all of them except John Canfield. If you think about the history, in 1975, John Harris was at the helm, and a whole list of other leaders. I tip my hat to those people who take the responsibility of an executive officer of the city. I also have great respect for those who have served as treasurer, John Riley presently, and also city clerk, Walter Brushevich. It goes without saying that I had the privilege of taking home a pearl of new knowledge by sitting with the present council and other councils, taking from them the best idea and using them without even asking for their permission or perhaps their knowledge. The entire staff of Dearborn Heights, the mayor's staff, the city clerk's staff, the treasurer's staff, the police department, the fire department, the first responders, on whom we always depend on from day, early in the morning till the day we fall asleep, have been good mentors, good sources of information that have taught many valuable lessons. This would not be possible if the general public of Dearborn Heights didn't see in me the potential of serving the kind of caliber of service that I strive to deliver. It's the personal vote that seats us at this table. Public service is an honorable responsibility, and I impose upon all of the officers elected and appointed, do not tarnish that responsibility with misjudgment, use good common sense and avoid nonsense, as opposed to using good sense. This is not the end. I'm not going anyplace. I still have some time to serve on the General Government Pension Board before my term expires, so I'll be looking in on everybody from time to time as I come through the hallways, but for me, it's been a tremendous ride, and I appreciate it very much.
I don't want to drag this out, but since Mayor Canfield's here, I have a million stories I could tell over 23 years, you can imagine, okay? However, when I was working for her, we went from plastic bags to paper bags for yard waste, okay? And then I think we gave them like a month to change over. And we had these two gentlemen in Military Hills that called a couple times and said they didn't pick up our grass, didn't pick up our grass. So, you know, Painter and Ruthenberg was our pickup guys at the time, they never said anything, we never thought to say, "Are they in paper bags?" So after the second time they called, her in her nice, gentle, female voice came out and said, "Get over it, 12345, dah 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 dah, and see what's going on with their trash, their yard waste." So I go over there, and there's a man that's probably 90, and his son who's probably 70, and they come out, and they got three humongous bags of grass in front of their house because they have big property over there. I looked at it, and I go, "What am I going to do with this? It's got to go to the DPW, what am I going to do? I can't lift this stuff, it's too heavy." So between the three of us, we got it in the car, I drove down to the DPW, I got somebody down there to help me with the grass, and my car stunk for a week.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, on that note, I just found a roll of the blue plastic bags that I once bought. I had put them away, and I just found a whole roll, and they're still perfect.
Mr. Chairman?
This is also, I guess it won't be our last meeting, because she'll be helping us out after the first of the year, for our council secretary Denise.
Oh, yeah.
Who's done a great job. Councilwoman Clayton?
And thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yes, I was going to say thank you to Denise Walker, who has been our council chair, our secretary, she's done a fabulous job. Every time we have a question about something, or we need a document, she is our go-to person. And then I also had a question regarding snow emergencies. I know we had a declared snow emergency yesterday evening, and I know there's more snow coming, but I was contacted by some residents regarding the sirens, and I know, Mr. Ann Crapp, you're behind the camera there, don't know if you're able to let us know regarding sirens, because not everyone's on social media or was aware of the declared snow emergency, if we'll be using those sirens moving forward. Are you able to answer us? I know you're behind the camera, I'm sorry.
Hold on.
Okay.
Is Chief Yanis still here?
I'm here.
Chief, sirens?
Thank you.
So, question is, the alarms?
The sirens.
Sirens, sometimes we set them off when the snow emergency's in effect, sometimes later at night, if it's late, we don't know, we set them off, because then the people get upset, and we'll do it in the morning.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
In effect, yesterday, Mr. Ann Crapp, you know, we notified the media, so it's out there in the news. If you heard yesterday, it was Dearborn Heights and Royal Oak. So tomorrow, we're expecting more snow.
You're stealing my thunder.
Go ahead, leave it up to me.
Can I jump on? Yeah, really quick, just as of 9:00 PM last night, we did declare a snow emergency. We were one of two cities, and the majority of our residents got the cars out of the street. By 7:00 tonight, or this past night, 90% of the streets are done. Salt doesn't always work when it's under 20 degrees, it is still very slippery. But our DPW was out 2:00 AM this morning and finished, almost finished, we got a couple dead ends and islands that we still have to hit. Tomorrow, we're expecting four to six inches.
It's going up, Chrissy Snow, 5:00.
At the beginning of this meeting, it was three to five.
Your great news, our weatherman.
We are planning on doing another snow emergency. We need the cars off the streets, we need it. It takes a DPW two passes to get down a street without any cars on the street, just like we saw an increase in street sweeping, those cars get off the street, we can get your streets cleared. The cars don't get off the streets, there's problems. So I just want everybody to get the streets cleared, and we did have a couple issues with people yielding to snowplows, they can't stop as quickly as we can, so make sure...
So give them tickets.
Yeah.
Chrissy?
That's what we did, so give them tickets and get off the road.
Chrissy, it's three inches or more, is it four?
Three inches or more. We declare an automatic snow emergency. The mayor declared one last night. Anyways, we are one of, I think, three communities that actually plows every single street with three or more, and we do get to them. Sometimes it takes a little while, but we do get to them, and I think we did a good job for our first snow.
Anyone else? Any other announcements? School board member, Colleen Kruszanek?
Yes, Colleen Kruszanek on Plainfield Street. I just, really quick, I know it's late, everybody wants to go home, but first of all, I'd like to honor both Mr. Barry and Mr. Kozinski for being the most consummate gentlemen I have ever met in my life. They've always treated me with respect, and they are just wonderful men. But what I'm really here for is to honor Marge Horvath. She, I met her 25 years ago when I was standing out at a poll for Lyle Van Houten. She relieved me, and she said, "How do you know Lyle Van Houten?" And I said, "Well, my mom and dad know him because his son played hockey with my brother." And she goes, "Hockey? I'm a hockey freak." You know, I guess all the kids, all our kids played hockey. And we started a friendship, and she hoodwinked me into so many things during these years. I rode a golf cart up and down Beach Daily, putting people in their place for the parade. Judy Kozinski and her hoodwinked me for Taste of the Heights, and Ken Gribble will never let me forget that. It was a mess, but everybody ate good, and it ended up nice. On Mayor Exchange Day with Mayor Canfield, we went over to tour Berwin Senior Center, and they said, "We would like to show you our history closet." And they opened the door, and the plaques that were on a monument in front of Brainerd Elementary School, from kindergarten through 6th grade, I went there. My father was the first name on those plaques for serving in World War II, he was on the first wave in Normandy. And they were sitting on the floor gathering dust in a closet. Marge and I went on a mission to get those plaques rededicated, and we got them rededicated to the veterans in the South End, and I don't know if that's still open, I heard they were closed.
No.
That one is still open?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because if anything happens, those plaques, I need to know about it. She gave me such kindness, I had cancer, and I came home and I was recovering, and it was a really low day for me. And at the door, I answered, and there was a orderly box of cookies, they were all orderlies, you know, looking so... And it just brightened my day, it was a cookie bouquet, and it was just the kind, she's shown me such kindness, she's known my kids since they were really, really teeny, and we sat in Mayor Canfield's office and watched the returns when I lost the school board election by 11 votes. Marge said, "Don't let it deter you," and I kept plugging away, I lost three times before I won, and I have been on the board now for over 20 years. And I attribute that to Marge. She got me involved, she is the most wonderful human being, she's like my mom, and I will never forget you, and I'm going to stay on you, because when I need something, I always call you and you get it done. So even though you're not going to be here anymore, here, you're going to be getting things done for me, girl. I love you, Marge.
We have our personnel director, ESP.
I promise it will be quick. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Elizabeth Saboto Perry, the Human Resource Director for the city of Dearborn Heights, and the best part of being the Human Resource Director is that I have a front row seat to see what our employees are capable of doing and giving back to the city of Dearborn Heights. So tonight, I just wanted to take a few minutes, you've seen some things, scarf? You've seen, oh, you're looking at, no, I wore a conservative suit. So you may have seen some Facebook posts and some things online about some of the contributions our employees have made over the past week, and it's actually been over the past year. And so I just wanted to take a few moments to show you what our employees do beyond their job descriptions, and it's quite amazing. Over $2,000 has been collected for many of the community fundraisers that have gone out throughout the year. We've participated in the Vista Maria School Drive. Our police officers have shopped with students for school supplies at Target, it's shopping with the cops. Our firefighters have been on corners collecting money in booths for the MDA, they've had their burn camp, they've had the chili cook-off that benefits their burn camp. Today, we had a carload of minivan that was packed with a bunch of employees putting in packages that are going to service over 300 people at the Salvation Army for this holiday season. Many of our employees adopt corners with the Goodfellows, the Department of Public Works, the police officers, the fire department, even HR, she's always trying to collect money. Not me, Marion, the person I work with, they're always trying to shake it down for a buck. There's a lot of good things that our employees are doing to not only make the job a little more fun, but to make the community that much stronger. And so my interview tip for any of you that are going to apply for any jobs in 2018 is, we're going to ask you, what do you want to work on in the city of Dearborn Heights?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else? Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I just have a real quick update. Earlier today, we had a meeting at Warren Valley Golf Course regarding the traffic situation at Riverside Middle School, and because I've mentioned it here at a meeting, I just wanted to give you an update that we did speak, the mayor was there, myself, the superintendent of schools, the engineers that they hired, and Sue from the school board, and we just, you know, talked about some of the options. The county engineering department wasn't able to stay, but I did get a call after the fact, so I'm guessing that they have a lot of last-minute things they want to get through my committee before the end of the year, because the director called me, Mayor, this afternoon, saying that they would be more than glad to bring their whole engineering team with the traffic people and all of that to look at the different options with the lights in January. So we will reschedule that meeting in January. We did give them a copy, the superintendent of schools did give the engineer that was there for a moment, our deputy director of DPS, Lawrence Young, who's formerly of MDOT, a copy of the report that they had done, so he did bring that back to our engineers. They'll get a chance to look at that before they sit down with us, and then we'll be able to move forward. You know, there's several different things, we haven't gotten to any decision-making yet, but there's different things we're going to look at with the timing of the light, maybe a blinking light, so we can get people in and out of the golf course where they turn around there, because if we don't do something with that light, they're getting backed up in there, and if we can't effectively use that, they're backed up all the way down Warren and Beach Daily like they are now, which is very, very unsafe situation. So we're just not going to let up until we get it resolved. It's been a problem for a decade at least, and continually getting worse as the capacity of that school is maximum, maxed out. So it's probably worse now than it's ever been because of the population within the school keeps growing. So while most people's enrollments are down, and they're closing schools, your enrollments are up, so that's a good thing, because you've got young, new families moving in, and that's always great for a community. So I just want to let you know that we're going to continue to work on it, and that after we meet, we'll all be contacting folks to have that meeting in January and then report back as we move forward. I just wanted to touch base with that, and because I missed it, I want to say congratulations to all of those that have been sworn in today. I look forward to working on all of you in the future, and big shoes to fill over here, just, I'm sure you all know it, but thank you all for your time, and Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, however you celebrate it. Enjoy the season.
Anyone else? Please come up and state your name and the street you live on. Our city clerk, Walter Brushevich.
I'll keep this brief. I have a lot to say, and we will talk to the council people that are leaving, but what I do want to say to you is thank you. As all elected officials know, you took a thankless job. You can't make everybody happy. You worked for probably three cents an hour many months, and just thank you for being the people that you were and doing this job and taking this on, and taking the criticism, and you're getting the well-deserved accolades tonight. And I just want to thank you for doing what you do, doing what you did, and thank you for what you've done for me.
Thank you all.
The other thing I want to say is, it's going to be tough to have somebody sit next to me beside you.
Even though I kicked you all the time?
Well, I'm not going to talk a lot, but I'm just going to say, Marge and I have had an absolutely love-hate relationship. I've told her many times, I don't like you all the time, but I love you, and I feel like her children, because she treats me, I think, as one of her children. She yells at me and tells me what to do, and we've had this relationship, so not sitting next to you is going to be very difficult from now on. So I thank you all, and when we leave this meeting, I want to ask you a favor. You usually ask for an adjournment, but during that time, we have a hustle and a bustle, and everybody's moving along. Say it loud, say it strong, so we can remember it, that motion to adjourn, and if we could have our, excuse me, if we could have our two outgoing councilmen be able to second that motion.
But for clarification, it wouldn't be an official thing?
It wouldn't be an official thing.
But there's residents that want to speak.
I'm sorry?
It wouldn't be an official adjourning, because there's residents that want to speak.
No, I mean at the end.
Right, right.
If we pay attention and listen to that, and not hustle and bustle and have the two council...
That's the first time anybody ever told me I didn't talk loud.
So God bless you all, and God bless all our residents, and God bless our new council people coming in. And God bless all our residents, and God bless our new council people coming in. You'll find out, as they found out for their many years, June 3rd, you just made a lot of enemies and a lot of people. That could be what make you happy, but God bless. Good luck.
Thank you all.
Yes, my name is Timothy Whetley. I live on Cornell Street. I haven't even been to one of these meetings before. This is the first time I've ever been here. I think it's wonderful that when I came in the door, they offered me a piece of cake. I don't know either one of you people because even though I've resided 35 years here, I've always stayed to myself, and I felt that I was comfortable enough, I didn't have to come here for any complaints. But just the short time I've been here, I feel like I've misjudged everybody. You people are very hard-working people, and you do try and help everybody the best you can, no matter what the situation is. But I just wanted to congratulate you two, even though I don't know you. And maybe I can take you fishing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Margie? Anyone else? Anyone else?
Move to adjourn. Oh, here we go. I know, I know.
Give me a three-minute sign.
Where's the three-minute sign? Our former longtime councilman and longtime council chair, Ken Baron. Ken, go ahead.
Ken Baron, you know, I just want to thank Tom for what you've done, even when I worked with you on council, and Joe and Margie. And, you know, this is kind of a sad night for the city because we're losing a lot of deep knowledge from these people. You know, I know Joe and Margie were the longest, but that's going to be really tough to replace that. But I wish the best to all the new people that came in, and congratulations to all the reelected people, and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you. Fire chief, Dave Brogan.
Just really quickly, Councilman Bill Bazi has been working to set up a battle between the Dearborn Police Department and the Dearborn Heights Fire Department. It's all for Toys for Tots for Kids. It's something that he's worked with the Marines for a long time. It's a great organization and a great cause, but for now, our friendly neighbors at Dearborn are going to be our competition, and we're trying to get as many toys as we can over to the Hype Center tomorrow between...
12 and 4.
12 and 4 o'clock, yep. And so, in the meantime, Dearborn is going to be doing the best to gather all the toys they can in the morning, and we're going to have press out there. Councilman Bazi is going to be there, and I've heard rumor that our police department may show up to back us up a little bit, too. So, we're looking to have a lot of people out there, and it's all for a good cause.
Great. Thank you. Margie? Hello to our former mayor, Ruth Canfield. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, and you know, I didn't want to stand up and speak. I don't want to, but you really... I was here. I was on the council for 14 years. I was mayor for 10 years. I know what you go through. I know what you go through as council people, and I know what you go through as me. It's a tough job. It's really a tough job. Margie has, in my case, I've known Margie since our kids played hockey together. That was many years ago. I won't tell you how many. Many years ago. But she also, she talked briefly about being my assistant, and she did a great job. It's a hard job. It's a very tough job. So, if you work hard at it, you do the best you can, all you can do is the best you can do. But thank you very much for your service, all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, now, Margie.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
I thought three of them had said. Joe?
Good evening, everyone.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.